Thank you. Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. Lynda will get the attendance when she gets back in. Declarations of a conflict of interest, anyone?
I'm not seeing one.
Okay. Approval of agenda additions or deletions. So I'm going to start 9A. You have this attachment for the top three. Microbrewery's downtown. We have purchasing petroleum for 9B. Canadian cross-country championships, 9C. I'm going to add Shell Canada, 9D. 9E is kidney health month. Going to add that. Just going to be a placed on file thing. But anything else that anyone can think of? Deputy?
Thank you, your worship. And it was something that councilor just brought up before the meeting is maybe clarification on the grants process in regards to organizations having money in the bank. Just maybe we'll talk to the CAO about it.
I wanted to bring up an issue.
You need to put your microphone on. It's all recorded. Okay, go ahead, councillor.
I wanted to bring up an issue relating to the E E here, I know it's a throat, E E N T position here in Yarmouth. And what I want to discuss is urging council to pass a, to send a letter off to the Minister of Health to confirm the rumor that, that's all I'll say it is now, that that position will be eliminated and people will have to go to Kentville to receive the service after Dr. Broderick retires. So I believe we should do something on that.
Okay. Thank you. That's 9G. For those of you that are keeping score, 9G, E E N T position. Okay, you can turn your light back. Good.
I moved the agenda as the additions.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Questions?
Question's been called. All those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, now we're back to, anybody else got a pile of stuff on their desk like this? Wow. Okay, presentation. Woo! The Antique Car Club. Come on up, gentlemen. Welcome. There's a whole table here that are absolutely thrilled to have you. And you've got about 10 minutes, so you can take that amount of time or not, whatever you, okay?
Thank you very much, Mayor and councillor.
And make sure he grabs that, my rate speak right into that.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to come here today. Paul Robichon and I have done this for the last few years, but this year Paul wanted a little respite, so he's kind of backed off. And Brent Bullerwell, who's with me, has taken over the chairmanship of the show, so I'm going to put it over to him, and he's going to tell you all about it.
You're looking older today.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
I'm feeling it, yeah. Good afternoon, town council and Madam Mayor. We're excited to be here today. We've got a lot on the go in regards to the Yarmouth Car Show presented by the Royan 20s Antique Auto Club. As you're probably all well aware, this has been an ever-growing event in the downtown of Yarmouth. Its primary purpose originally was to help fundraise for the club, to help maintain the club, the building, and to invest in other opportunities to grow things. As a result of moving the venue to the downtown location a few years ago, it's just exponentially grown, and it's exploding with interest from not just the local area, or even from this province. This year, we've got feedback, especially through our social media endeavors and our website, we've got feedback coming from people coming from as far away as PEI, New Brunswick. Last year, we had some vehicles registered, I believe Ontario, and there was even a couple from B.C. registered for B.C. And it's going to have a great and positive impact on the downtown. We've got some plans in place this year. We're looking to potentially extend the show grounds themselves by a couple blocks that way to help accommodate the interests.
That one, yeah.
Yep, sorry. Towards King Street, actually, is where we're looking to potentially move it to. And what brought that on was both the idea of the show growing, attendance growing, as well the interest from the Yarmouth Firefighters Museum. They have an antique vehicle that they only have access to at certain times coming this year, and they want to be a part of the show. And they actually approached me in the club. So they want us to extend the show grounds so that they can be included, the museum to help boost that. And as well this year, we've been in talks, last year the Corvette Club of Nova Scotia attended. There was, I think there was about 15 members from that last year. But a local gentleman here, I've been in contact with him, he's now the vice president of the club. Last year was the last year for their annual meet in Truro as a club, and they voted on it, and they're planning to host it here as part of the car show. So he's told us a number of 50 to, 40 to 50 Corvettes just from that club, and that's going to be hosted within our show, all in their own section. They are also coordinating with the Corvette Club in New Brunswick, and potentially with the one in Maine, as we're currently working with Bay Ferry, we're in talks with them to help provide packages for travelers coming across specifically for this purpose. And once we have those packages in place, we can take them out and advertise them. We also have another contact in the U.S. on the Maine side that is really looking to bring over some vehicles and some people. So we're looking to utilize that ferry service to help grow this. We had a few hiccups last year with our parade route due to the overwhelming number of cars. I think we had, what, 475 in attendance for the Friday Night Cruise, which was taxing on the upper end of Stars Road. We ran into some issues, the RCMP had to let traffic flow. So what we did this year, we got on at it early, and we coordinated with the RCMP to come up with an alternate plan for that. And they suggested that we go from the southern end, I'll say, of the mall parking lot, and coordinated with Lynda at the Yarmouth Mall, and they're all on board. So we're going to run an alternate route, the typical route, but we're going to start from there instead of the Mariner Center this year to help avoid any congestion with traffic. And as a result, it'll be a streamlined parade, and we're really expecting a lot of vehicles this year from that. I feel the impact on the community is great.
You're correct.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And I think it's getting greater. It's not just the Yarmouth economy that's getting the boost, as I see, I've been in contacts with the president of the PEI Street Route Association. He and his wife came down last year. They were, they had fun, they won a TV. So they went back, and now this year they're bringing 12 people.
Wow.
And they're doing a run, and they're doing, taking a whole week, and they're going through the valley, so Annapolis will see the effects of this, Digby County, tri-counties especially. And as far as the club goes, when it comes to the fundraising, we're no longer just looking to fundraise for our club. We're coordinating with other charities, other fundraising efforts for local, anything from a ladies softball team to a kid's school trip or something that they're looking to plan. We've opened up areas for them to fundraise during the show, but at the same time, we want to protect the downtown merchants from outside vendors coming in looking to profit off of this. So we open it to charities and fundraising efforts, but we do not allow people to come in and sort of cut in front of the local merchants. And the feedback that we've had from the local merchants, shop owners and restaurants has been overwhelming. And we're working with the Lions Club this year, and we're looking to maybe do some work with the Gilles Boudreau Foundation as well to help fundraise for them, and really make this work for not just us, but for everybody. So I don't know if that answers any questions, or if you have any other questions that you'd like to have answered?
So the vendor piece, I always think the food. Because when we do switch open streets, it's only, you know, it's not as big as you, not even closed, but there's lineups for food. So you guys have, I always think, do you have enough food? Because that's what people come for, the food, right? So I don't know how that matches with not interfering with the merchants, but I always think of that.
As far as having enough food, is that what you're concerned with?
Yeah, I just wonder how that meshes up with, you know, making sure. Were you going to ask the same?
Yeah, basically the same thing. I think if you're going to have 5,000 or 6,000 people down on Main Street, they're going to be, there's going to be plenty of opportunities for the standalone restaurants to do very well, and not only the, people like a variety, they like the food truck, they like the other things that go along with it. But Brent, how you making out, how did you make out last year financially?
I'll put that over to the treasurer.
We did very well financially last year. We ended up making a few dollars, which we can turn over again this year, and hopefully make the show bigger and better. We found that one of the big things, we gave away like what we call a goodie bag to each entrance. Lots of the shows you go to, you'll get a little plastic bag with some papers and pens and a lot of advertising in it. We gave away prizes, so to speak, and to everybody that came, not just a few. And we've had a very good response with that. So we were going to make those a little bigger this year, and we're talking probably $3,000 to $4,000 for that one particular thing. But had a lot of positive feedback from it, so I think that's something that we will have to continue with. The other thing I would say, the merchants in the town and the municipality were very good and donated prizes, and we had a $2,500 toolbox, we had a $500 TV. Were donated, a MIG welder, and these things all bring these people from, and like Brent says, the fellow from PEI, he won the TV, well, he's all anxious to come this year. He going to bring, you know, 10 or 12 of his friends with him, too, so.
And that's the thing, I was just wondering, because I asked about the money part, because I know that we contributed quite handily or quite nicely last year, but I'm just wondering about provincial and federal funding, because they talked about the capacity from bringing people from the states, the capacity from bringing people from New Brunswick, Prince Edward Island, it's starting to be a regional southwestern Nova Scotia event, right? So I think there's an opportunity to cap into or tap into other sources of provincial and federal funding for tourism infrastructure. And your worship, you've said it the last couple of years, how it's gone from the first year to the second year to, you know, what it is now, is this has the opportunity to be, you know, we never say the words up there, this is our war for our rally, right?
And with the understanding that we completely separate, but, but, you know, how many years have people yelled at us, "Do you let it go?" We didn't let it go.
We never had it in the first place.
That's one of those alternative facts that have run rampant. But this has just increased so quickly. So, yeah, how do we look at that, Phil?
We have records of it.
Okay, yeah.
That would be very good to get, the provincial or the federal, but I can only speak for myself, and I think I was speaking for Brent. We really don't know how to do that. If we had some direction.
And we have, in Denton, we have the wherewithal or the ability to not only help you with that, with Natalie and with Rick from Yasta, but we have that ability. It might be late this year, I don't know.
I would say.
But we have, you know, maybe next, maybe this year when the thing's done, Wade's the chairman of Yasta, sit down with, sit with, sit down with Wade and Rick and Natalie from here, and Mark Lynn from the municipality, Jason DeVoo maybe from Collins Office, and maybe Zach himself, and go over what went really well. The funding opportunities, because I don't know, you know, any of the opportunities you have, but there is opportunities in tourism infrastructure, so I think that would be a great conversation to have, because we brought it here, here, and I can just see it growing bigger and bigger every year. So that's a conversation we would love to be involved with, because we can help you on that front.
And like you say, I mean, if you don't need it, you don't need it, but it may be able to up the ante in some way. The other piece is, I don't remember, I don't remember you screaming for volunteers. Did you just have them? They kind of, they do. This community, the volunteers just kind of land. But did you, are you good there?
I think so far we're okay for our volunteer level. We're not looking to change things too much from what we had last year, we're just looking to improve the few things we need to. But this year, we've organized it so that there's a committee, I think there's six members on the committee, to organize the event rather than the whole car club. But the whole car club is on board, and the club is growing. I think we did acceptance for what, four or five new members at the last meeting?
Yeah, I would say probably since we started the car show, the first year we had five new members, and since then we've had another seven or eight, so probably we've had 12 to 15 new members.
Good for you.
As a result, I think, of the car club, of the car show.
What's the dates this year, Dent?
Pardon me?
What's the dates?
July 14th and 15th, I think. That weekend, very close to those dates.
Okay. Good. Yeah. Thank you. From all of us, like, thank you. It's that big thing that makes a difference.
Well, thank you for enabling it, too.
We're thrilled.
Great.
Good stuff. Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay. Staff report, CAO report. CAO?
Thank you, worship. I've attached my usual report, which is based on the motions of council, but I've also, this month and going forward, will be providing you with an update on the priorities that you set that fall under my responsibility or my direct responsibility. And so that's a one-pager that is attached to your agenda, and I just kind of updated you on the six, I believe, six things that fell under my direct responsibility. Those are the solar project bid, which the process for that has been pushed back by the province as they tweak the rules, and we do have a memorandum of understanding that we would be signing with the other municipal units in Yarmouth County, as well as the Alternative Resource Energy Authority, who would be assisting us with that project, if there is a project there. And air passenger service feasibility, I've made a comment on that, but we should know more in the next couple of weeks around the feasibility. Excuse me. And you were briefed a joint council meeting on that. Waterfront development strategy, I've been working with Morris Lloyd on the request for proposal document to go out. That will be brought to you folks to review prior to being sent out, to make sure that we're all on the same page. Arts and culture facility, you know as much as I do about that, and so I've made a few just brief comments. Joint council workshop, I have floated that idea to the other CAOs in Yarmouth County and hope to hear back in the very near future. Our facilitator that we use, Gordon McIntosh, is back in the area in both April and June, and so hopefully during one of those visits, we'll be able to tie something in regionally. And finally, the organizational review report. Still reviewing the first draft and also assessing whether or not the report meets all the requirements of the RFP that was put out. So that's my brief update, and I'll be updating that on a monthly basis for you.
Good stuff. Go ahead, councillor MacLeod.
Just a positive comment, Jeff. When I saw that earlier today, I think that's great. Just reminds us all to be on, that we're all, can be on the same page at all times. Thank you very much.
So I have a question on, so on your CAO's task, so down here it says Decision Soucentennial School, 25%, but it was on the sale. So what happens when we go somewhere else?
So you've gone somewhere else, and we talked about that last month, that that's really temporarily on hold until, because we do have occupants in the building. And until that situation resolves, and we do the other review of whether or not, I guess, the pros and cons and feasibility of retaining it as social infrastructure, I won't do anything further on the marketing of it for sale.
Okay. Good, thank you. Anyone else for the CAO? Good. Fire department. Welcome, chief.
So my reports were attached, if there's any questions. Oh, that was easy.
Strategic priorities. Did you want to speak to that, or are you good?
If there's any questions, I can answer questions, but I'm self-explanatory there when you read it. It's pretty straightforward.
Any questions for the chief? We're good?
That, that letter from the fire chief, is that on the website, too? Can you get that on the website, Jeff?
This one?
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, good. I guess you're good, chief. Thank you. Planning department. So there's a report here. Does Morris do this?
Uh, excuse me.
Yep, go ahead.
So the processes for the, for the planning department report were well-established by Caroline prior to her leave, and so her staff have continued to produce the same inputs as they had before and are submitting that. If you, if you wish to see anything additional from Morris, if you can indicate that to me now or later, we can pass that along. I'm sure he's happy to provide whatever it is the council wishes.
Good. Anything there? Operational services, engineers report, Dave's here. If anyone has any questions for Dave. Go ahead, councillor.
David, have you received an update on the report for the Lake George water capacity study that we're undertaking?
I just got the final report today. I haven't had a chance to go through it yet.
I saw the preliminary report, and my understanding is that it looks like, based on the preliminary, that we do have enough water coming into the watershed to meet our needs, to meet the needs of the rock that discharges out through where the fish pasture used to be.
That would be correct.
That's the nutshell version, isn't it?
Pardon me?
That's the nutshell version.
Yeah, but they're recommending an adjustment in the discharge rates during certain times of the year for the stream maintenance flows.
Which means we'll have to encourage the federal government to change in the recommended amount of water let over the dam so that the province doesn't hammer us down again.
We'll have to apply for amendment to our operating permit in order to do that, yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Good. Number seven there, the Killam's Wharf structural assessment. What's the difference between this and what the, your chair?
Yeah, Jerry, we, I think Killam's Wharf's not under.
It's not under, it's separate, that's why. Okay. That answers my question. I just didn't know why there was two, two things. Anything else for the engineer? Okay. Good stuff, Dave. Thanks. Finance department, I know Jerry's out.
When are we going to have a?
Yeah, budget meeting.
Budget meeting.
Jerry has a, I guess, a compilation of the capital that he and I have to review before we bring it to you. I haven't seen it yet, so I had hoped that this week we could do that, and even as early as today, schedule meetings for you, but Jerry's been out this week, and so when he returns, that's first order of business, so we'll be asking for you folks to block some time in your calendar to work through capital first, and then we'll get into the operating budget.
Good, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Good. Yarmouth Recreation, and I believe Frank just dropped something here that I had.
There's a few staff reports there in a bundle that I just dropped off at your, at your desks. Just a few highlighted things, I'm not going to take much time. We had a very successful Flag Day event on February 15th. On Family Day, the holiday, we had over 70 people out for a family walk on the trail through town up by Lake Milo. Numerous seniors activities happening. We've launched a new electronic newsletter of things going on in the community. We have a table tennis night on Wednesday evenings at the Rotary Center at the Hebron Rec Complex that's just started up. And a big project, we received $38,000 in funding from the Yarmouth County Community Health Board.
How much?
$38,000. One of 18 projects funded in the province. It's called Steps to Connect, and the goal of this project is working with Dalhousie University, Yarmouth Recreation, Nova Scotia Community College, and the Nova Scotia Health Authority in connecting people with mental health issues with recreation opportunities in the community. So we're going to be looking at hiring a couple part-time staff, research assistant, coordinator, and our funding goes until March 31 of 2018.
Very nice.
So stay tuned for more updates on that project. But it's, Steps to Connect is a provincial initiative. Our friends down in Chester have started a Steps to Connect program down there, and I guess we're the second one in this region to start a program. So we got a great partnership team, and like I said, we're looking for some staff now to help steer the ship.
Good stuff. Any questions for Frank? Go ahead.
When do you think?
How'd that happen?
When do you think you'll have that part of the equation filled, Frank?
We've, we're canvassing everyone, every contact, educational programs that we can. We're closing applications for a coordinator on March 1st, so next week, and we want to get somebody going as quick as we can. The way the grant is broken up, we have a little bit of money to March 31st of this year, and then another pot of money kicks in for the new fiscal starting April 1st. So kind of a tight turnaround for the first month to get someone in place and get some things moving, and then hopefully we'll have some assistance from Dalhousie. We have a Dalhousie professor, Susan Hutchinson's on our planning team, and she's already got a couple people in mind that can help with some of the research stuff that we have to do.
So they, so you have a team or a group already put together that that person reports to? Good?
Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Frank. Okay, economic development report. That should be, that's here from Natalie. Is there any questions on that? Or we can always talk to her when she's upstairs? Okay. Business. Killam's Wharf. Request for decision. Got a whole package here. CAO?
Your worship, I'd ask the town engineer to address this item, but what we're looking for is acceptance of his recommendation to award the work to CBCL as per the attached proposal. So Dave, do you want to describe that a little bit?
We did a preliminary assessment report, and they came up with two recommendations for repairs of the wharf and with a couple concept plans, preliminary costs, and they recommended that we further, do further investigation to, to firm up those plans and come up with better costs. And the fees for, total fees would be for approximately $60,000 plus tax, and they would include a geotechnical investigation plus a bath metric survey and a topo survey.
Make a motion to accept the recommendation.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? I was just looking for the price on this, but it wasn't in the request. I didn't see it. That's why. Yeah. Yep, sorry, Jeff. Go ahead.
We have to budget for that, Jeff, don't we?
Oh, Cliff.
Yes, your worship.
Sorry.
This work that is outlined here is results from an indication that there's some deterioration in the original materials that were used to construct the wharf. It's 25 or 30 years old now, and they've done a very thorough inspection under the wharf. CBCL has done that. They've seen some evidence that there's some moving and so on, but not anything that's going to go crashing down momentarily. But what they're proposing to do, temporarily at least, is to set up, do some additional work to set up some control points so that they can monitor how much, if any, it's continuing to move, and then, and they need to do some more work drilling, and they've got to do some slow sampling with the drill down below to see how much load-bearing capacity there is underneath the structure if they were to go ahead with some of those detailed plans. They've got two plans, basically, as to how you might fix this problem.
Basically, it's armor stone or sheet piling, so.
Exactly.
One's about twice the cost of the other.
And, and it's complicated because of the depth of the water off the face of the wharf that, to which the, uh, the floating docks are attached. One solution will involve actually changing those so that they're moved out. The other solution might be to avoid that. So the work needs to be done, but it's, there, there's a much bigger bill coming later on if we were to go, and we will have to go somewhere in terms of an improvement and a repair of the facilities, two things above. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so moved and seconded and Jeff's gonna answer the question from?
So that would be part of our capital budget, the, both the study as well as future work.
So, and as Cliff has perhaps suggested, is there a place to go for assistance, money, more money, and, and, or is it all us?
Uh, it, it would be a project that, that might be eligible for infrastructure, but we have many projects that are eligible for infrastructure, so we, we tend to, to wanna submit larger, larger projects. Now, I don't know where this one's gonna come in at, at the end, but, uh, it potentially, um, you know, if there was a program that was particularly, particularly centered around wharves and that kind of thing, it would be ideal. But generally, all that exists right now that we're aware of are general infrastructure funds.
When I was reading the B and C, the preliminary design and the assessment report, I should've called my friend Cliff and had a discussion with him, 'cause he understands that better than I do. Thank you, Your Worship.
That's the engineer, isn't it?
I joke, I'm not a senior engineer. General engineer. They never try to call me.
Oh, my goodness. I think they still do. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Reciprocal Transfer Agreement Policy Update. Is that you? Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that this requires council approval, but I'm bringing it here just out of a, an abundance of caution and diligence. Uh, so there's, there's an agreement that exists between the province and municipalities generally who have defined benefit pension plans that if an employee were to leave town and go work for the province, they can transfer their pension assets into the provincial pension plan. So we've recently had an employee do just that. Our building inspector left and took a, took a job with the province and so she, she's gone through this process. And our, our pension consultants were obviously involved and discovered that a document that, that is attached as appendix to our, to our policy is, is woefully out of date. So in order to have the documents properly reflect what we do in those cases, they've asked that we, that we update that, that sheet. And I've given you an attachment to show you what the current sheet looks like and there's a, a whole lot of numbers there and it continues, continues to be updated every month. But I'm bringing this to your attention to let you know that, or to, to request your approval that this, this new document be attached to our, to our pension policy so that anybody looking at this in the future, assuming they, they know what they're doing, can, can look at that chart and figure out what the, what the transfer amounts are, are to be. And so it's, it's very transparent. Just to give you an indication, the previous document had about two numbers on it, so it was very simplified and, and not very helpful to somebody looking at it. So a motion to, to approve this, uh, I'm gonna say the, uh.
The pension can be authorized to make the changes?
Yes.
That's, okay.
I'm prepared to make that motion. I note in the report, it's cost neutral. It doesn't cost us any money to do it and it's obviously needed. And frankly, we don't like to lose our employees, but then again, they should have the opportunity to better themselves and move on to bigger and better pensions with the province of Nova Scotia, maybe.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. You can turn your light out there, councillor. Election Report Update.
Your Worship, I'm gonna read this to you.
Okay.
And if there are questions, I will answer them. But I will caution before I do that there is some personal information related to this matter that I, that I don't think it's appropriate to discuss, such as names. But there is a situation that I think it's important that the public is aware of and that you're aware of and that you understand how it's been resolved. So I wrote this to provide you with a follow-up report on a matter related to the October 2016 municipal election that's recently reached a point of resolution and which I believe is in the public interest to have reported to council in this manner. As you know, the Municipal Elections Act governs municipal elections and the authorities of election officials, the processes that are followed, and among other things, the process and eligibility for becoming a candidate in a municipal election. During the campaign period, it became a concern of mine that one of the candidates nominated in the town of Yarmouth was ineligible. The returning officer sought verification of the candidate's eligibility but was unsuccessful in obtaining evidence of eligibility. The Act does not allow the returning officer to reject a nomination that had, after it has been accepted and signed, so there was no further official action she could take. The participation of the candidate had no bearing on the outcome of the race for which the candidate was nominated. Following the election, I remain concerned that our election process had been compromised and that if, if this were true and we did nothing to address it, we would be sending the wrong message to our citizens about how we value the integrity of the election process. After seeking advice on the options available to me, I made a complaint to the RCMP. The complaint was investigated. Several people were in, involved, several people involved were interviewed and I was advised of the outcome. First, the complaint was confirmed to be valid in that the candidate was not eligible to stand as a candidate in the municipal election. Secondly, after bringing the evidence to the Crown Prosecutor, it was determined that the likelihood of a conviction of any of the individuals who were directly involved was unlikely and no charges were laid. Conviction was not the point of the complaint, but rather to do everything within our authority and responsibility to, in order to ensure a fair and honest election and to act on any breach, a known breach of those principles to the extent of our authority. Going forward, I'll be making suggestions for amendments to the Municipal Elections Act to provide the returning officer with more authority to require documents as part of the nomination process and to be able to reject a candidate and remove them from the ballot if it becomes known that they are ineligible for specific reasons during the nomination period. My report to you is to give you confidence that the matter has been addressed.
Okay, so it's just a report. We don't need to do anything with it. Okay. Ren Intermunicipal Agreement Amended. CAO?
Okay, Your Worship, we, um, we had agreed to admit the District of Barrington. The District of Barrington had requested admission to our Regional Enterprise Network and all of the council members of the Regional Enterprise Network had agreed to accept Barrington. And so now the intermunicipal agreement has been amended to reflect that. And so now each council has to accept the amended agreement. And so I'd ask you to recommend this to council, then it council to accept it, and then, Your Worship, can sign on behalf of the Town of Yarmouth.
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Question?
Question's been called. All those in favor, go ahead.
Maybe, maybe one quick one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, has there ever, been any, any other discussion with any of the other municipal units in Shelburne County about coming in or they're now?
No, no.
They're, they're the other way?
Yeah, yeah, they're the other way. Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary? Motion carried. Need to approve changes to intermunicipal agreement to include Barrington. That's it. So, so the next one, sorry, the next one that I had added, we're just gonna remove because I think Jeff and I both added that at the same time. That's why I, that's why I was sending that note to find out if I missed something. Okay, so Correspondence for Action Request for Presentation by Julie Walters, Nova Scotia Works.
Make a motion. We have a presentation by Julie Walters of Nova Scotia Works that's the next available opportunity for us.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Question's been called. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Okay, so we're at additions now. Uh, Microbreweries, Deputy?
Yeah, and I, thank you, Your Worship. And this might be going to councillor McLeod and PAC. Uh, what is the process of, of how we go about this? Because, um, do we do them on an individual basis or do we do them all at once? So you can say you can put a microbrewery between, uh, you know, the downtown, Cor- Horton Street to King whatever, whatever? How do you, how do you do it?
So, Your Worship, I just quickly read the letter this afternoon and it looks fairly straightforward. Uh, the applicant would have to make it, make an application to amend the, the land use bylaw. I think the only amendment that would be required would be to add a use to the C1 zone and that use would be defined in order to accommodate the applicant's business interest. The, right now, you can't, you can't do a microbrewery or something of that nature, craft brewery. I'm not sure there's different definitions for those, but if, uh, my understanding is there is no, it's not a permitted use in the C1 zone. So make an application for that and then, to your point, uh, once it's permitted in the zone, it is not site-specific, it is zone-specific. And so any property that meets any other conditions within the land use bylaw would be able to, to develop that sort of, of business enterprise going forward.
So is it just as quick for us to do that on our own or is it?
He, he should and he, he should make the application or the business proponent, if it isn't him, should make the application. And the reason, there's two reasons for that. We sometimes do them as, as housekeeping amendments if there are sort of general fixes. Morris Lloyd is working on a suite of them now, sort of housekeeping items on the, on the Strategy and Land Use Bylaw. But when you have a particular business interest, uh, they should make the application. And so what they need out of it is communicated with the planning department and they work with the applicant. The council stands objective to it, has a public hearing process at the, at the council level and you make your decision ultimately after you've read the reports, heard from the public, and you aren't, you aren't the applicant yourself.
So, okay. And is there, there's been times that we've been the applicant ourselves though, isn't there?
Uh, not a lot, not a lot. There were, there's sometimes requests that come through councillors because somebody wants something done and it sounds like a good idea to the councillor. We try and discourage it. I think we may even have a policy against it because it doesn't, if you, if you do one, then you wanna do them all, right? What's, what's fair for one is fair for all. And, uh, if, all that we charge, by the way, the only fee that's charged is the cost of advertising. And so if an application is made, staff does their work, does the report, planning advisory committee meets, there's no cost yet incurred. Uh, if they recommend it to council, comes to the council table for first reading, there's still no cost yet. If council agrees to have it proceed to a public hearing, then it is, is only the cost of the advertising that's required under the Act to advise the public of this, of this change, that's the cost. And so I think we charge a, a fee of maybe $500. And if there's any savings on that, if we spend less than that, the applicant is refunded the balance.
Okay. So if they come and fill an application out, they can, uh, when's the next PAC meeting? Yeah.
Usually the PAC meets the week before the council meeting, so there's time for anything coming out of there to be organized and sent out with your agenda on the Friday preceding the council meeting. So it'd be Tuesday. Early March.
Councillorhood?
I was just gonna repeat what the CAO's already told you. I used to be chair of that thing. Uh, he has to make the application 'cause there's not enough information in that letter to, the, the planning department will have criteria for the information they require and he'll have to fill in, you know, the blanks on that. But when it comes back to the Planning Advisory Committee, it's open for the Planning Advisory Committee to consider how far, how wide, where and what, and even going on what he's asking for. Uh, that, that's an option and maybe that's where you were wondering about, I think, Deputy Mayor. So, but the process has to, we wouldn't wanna encourage a process whereby we're taking the, we're doing every one of these because we shouldn't burden our people with that. It should, it should be a process whereby the applicant applies and then once they apply, it comes into our hands, we look at our bylaw and however it comes out, it comes out either for that one applicant or for as many as might fit the criteria at the end.
Good? Go ahead.
Yeah, just, uh, just one other point before we, before we do that is that, you know, although there is no, there is no fee that's actually charged by the town, it's, it's a reimbursement of cost for external cost, right? It is, it is a deterrent from everyone who, who has a, a bright idea but isn't necessarily committed to it from walking in and saying, "How about you amend it so that we can put, uh, you know, flagpoles on the sidewalk in front of our businesses?" You know, "That sounds like a good idea. Why don't you do a report on that?" And so, you know, you chew up staff time and, and committee time for, for a bright idea that, that maybe doesn't have a real commitment behind it. So this is a cost. It's a small cost relatively to setting up a business and there's no fee for our work. It is simply to cover the external fee and it, it helps to, to make sure that people are really thinking seriously about what they wanna do before they proceed.
Okay. Chair of the PAC.
Phil, do you think the proper motion, motion then would be for Rick to make his own application to?
Or probably that group, I would say.
It's not for us to make the motion here, but for you to?
And I think, I think the other thing they were concerned about was more about timeline, but I don't think timeline's gonna be involved in this because I think if it went from here today or those guys coming in tomorrow or the next day and putting in the application, it'll get to the PAC in the same timely fashion, right? And I think that was more the concern than anything else was, was time-sensitive.
So, so Phil, did you just want to speak with Rick rather than?
Rick's here, but I think he was talking for another group, but I think if that's the process and it's cost recovery, so, you know, I think that was a concern of the, the original applicant might have been, um, over and above the permitting fee, but if it's a cost recovery, then there's not much you can do about it. Yep. CAO?
Yeah, so, so Morris Lloyd is our, our planner on contract during Caroline's absence and I know there's been some communication with the office up there. I spoke to, to Joanne to understand myself exactly where we were with this and she was well aware and has already started some of the investigations around it. So, you know, I'm sure if they, if they go ahead and make the application, that a report will come to the PAC as quick as possible.
Okay, good. Thank you. Any comments or questions? We're good? Rick, you got that? Okay, good. Uh, purchasing of petroleum, maybe the CAO can give us an overview on that and, since that was my?
Boy, you're back.
Go ahead, CAO.
Yes, Your Worship, there was a question a couple months ago about how do we, how do we purchase our petroleum products, our, our gas, diesel, furnace products? And the, I was advised that we, we take advantage of the, um, standing offer from the province of Nova Scotia. So they do a, a regular process where they have standing offers through tenders that are available to municipalities, hospitals, school boards, so on. So that's what we've been doing of, of late. If you wish to do a process of your own that, that might be more accessible to a, to a local supplier, you could do that, but because the amount is over $25,000 that you'd be procuring in any year, it would still have to be advertised on the provincial procurement website, so tendered through that process. And so it is possible that any, any potential supplier within the province could bid. So you can't necessarily control it to local suppliers, but you certainly, if you did it yourself, would give that opportunity that they would not take advantage of if they had the supply, you know, all of the public sector needs throughout the province.
Your Worship, I'll make a motion that the Town of Yarmouth tender for fuel products.
Is that the Town of Yarmouth? What'd you say?
Yeah, Town of Yarmouth.
Okay. Okay.
And, and...
I must have missed something.
No, well, we're ta- uh, we're talking through the, and if they come back, we could still, if they don't match the provincial procurement site, we can still go back and do the same thing that we've done. We can reject it.
Gotcha, okay, sorry, thank you.
And maybe the timeline, what would be the timeline for that? Would you be looking at maybe, uh, for July? Or would you be, to give you plenty of time to...
Well, we, you know, pass it to staff and see how quickly they can turn it around.
Okay, good.
Yeah, good, okay. So do they have a seconder? Moved and seconded? Any more discussion? Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Canadian cross-country? Is that you?
It wasn't me, but I...
I like it. It wasn't me, but I like it. Uh, your worship, I'd like to make a motion to town of Yarmouth send a letter of support for the bid preparation for the 2019 to the 2022 Canadian cross-country championships. Pardon me? Uh, cross-country... Just says Canadian cross-country championships.
Cross-country sport, the sport of cross-country. I'm sorry, I'm...
I think ru- running, I think.
No, no, running, the running, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
And, and, and I think the other one is, uh, the good thing about it, your worship, is, um, they usually hold it in four-year spans, too, which is, it'll be 2019, uh, 2020, 2021, and 2022.
There is some cost to it.
Yes, there is a cost to that, and...
They're looking at $10,000 a year per partner.
Yeah.
Yeah. How many, and Rick?
How many partners?
How many partners? Rick's right here.
Come on up, Rick, if you don't mind. I saw the $10,000 there. Okay, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, so it's, uh, it is 2019 to 2022, uh, four-year commitment to the event. Uh, it's currently held in, uh, Kingston, Ontario. Um, it is a $10,000 ask. If we were to get it, it's, it's conditional on getting that, obviously. Not gonna say we're not a long shot to get it. We are going up against, uh, Abbotsford, New Brunswick, or Abbotsford, B C to get, to get the event. But in order to bid on the event, we do need to be able to commit, uh, uh, $30,000 lo- from the local commu- from the local community, from three partners, uh, to, to be able to bid on it. And both the municipality of Yarmouth and municipality of Argyle have agreed to, uh, to do this.
They've already said yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, from the municipalities alone. Uh, there's, the budget's bigger than that for the entire event, but, uh, from the municipalities, it's $30,000 in total per year.
You want to put your...
Yeah, registration sponsorship.
Do you have any more questions? You want to put your light on, just so we can hear them?
Yeah, they charge a registration fee for all the athletes. There's a community race that they charge for as well. And then there's other, we're hoping for some provincial funding and, uh, local sponsorship as well.
So, so do you have a budget larger than the $30,000?
Yeah, the total budget's $69,000.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so I've got, I'm gonna have to put it on wide shot. So I've got Wade, and then I've got, uh, Jim.
Uh, Rick, my question is, if we were to get it, it runs in late November?
It's late November, generally the last Saturday in November.
So what you're talking about is bringing in 500-plus athletes at a time...
When there's no one else here.
When there's nobody else here. It's the shoulder season. This is part of building, uh, a year-round, uh, event location that, that we ultimately want Yarmouth to be.
Yeah, exactly.
So the money is, is a good investment if we were to get it.
You should, uh, be cherry-asta.
Just saying.
But, but you're absolutely right. It, it's a time when nobody's here, and that's exactly what we're trying to do, fill those shoulders, shoulder season. Uh, Jim, go ahead.
Rick, uh, are we competing with other locations for this event?
We are competing with Abbotsford, New, or B C.
So it was in the central Canada for four years, Ontario, and now they're gonna move to a, a coast for four years?
Yeah, that's the way it kind of ended up. That's who, we, we were the only two to put in, uh, letters of intent to host the, host the event, so...
Didn't we meet Abbotsford for the World Juniors, too? Was it them? Anyway...
Can't remember.
Anyway, I, I'm supportive, but I was just curious as to, you know, why it would not be closer to, uh, central Canada, you know, like it wa- like it has been in Kingston, Ontario. But, uh, it's great, and I support it, as everyone around the table is 100%.
For sure.
So what do you lose if you, how much you have to put, put in to, to, uh, do this?
To bid, nothing.
You know, oh, okay. Usually there's a cost with...
Sometimes, but not for this one.
Good, okay. Any more questions for Rick? Okay, question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Come again. In the shoulder season. All right, Shell Canada. Oh, that's me. Okay, so I just got an email, I don't know if anybody else got it, but I just got it at the last minute. It's Shell in celebrating Canada and communities where we live and work. So it, it celebrates the 150th, and it's, um, it's support to an individual community or region can be up to $15,000, with a focus on communities in which Shell operates. So I'm just, I'm gonna ask, where does this go? It, it's, I should have gave it to you, but I just got it. It's basically a deadline to apply for April 1st for... Okay, so we can refer this to recreation? Okay? Okay? I'll just send it to them. Is that easy now? Okay, good. Solve that one. And then the kidney, kidney health month, and, and we get, um, we get a number of these. So basically, they're asking us to proclaim March as Kidney Month. I don't think we do proclamations. So, I'm just, because I received it, if we can have a motion to just received on file, that would be great, for a proclamation for Kidney Health Month. Thank you. Moved and seconded, any discussion?
Questions?
Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. Uh, grants process, such you, deputy?
Yeah, and I think, uh, that maybe councillor Hood might be jumping in here in a minute. It's just, uh, through the grants to organizations process, I know, uh, eight years ago, or nine years ago, when I first, I got on council again, that we pretty well stuck to the, uh, theory that if there was money in the bank, unless it was seed money to get the event going up the next year, that, um, they weren't gonna be getting, uh, any grants to organizations. But I think some of the organizations that have applied over the last couple of years, some do have a significant amount of money in the bank, and we have still been, uh, doing the grants to organizations process. So I just wondered, the C A O, um, is that, is that a written stone policy, or has that just been, uh, rule of thumb, or, or how's it work?
Just looking for the provision here, uh, as you're speaking, I, yeah, so, um, so you have a written policy on, a policy statement on your grants program, and it says, "Council, as a matter of policy may, uh..." As a matter of policy, sorry, "will reduce its grant to any organization that has an operating or accumulated surplus of funds." And so that's not crystal clear to me. If you individually are allocating your grants, and you read the application, you read the financial statements, and you see that an organization has less apparent need than another, then I think you would individually make the determination to reduce their amount, perhaps. But that's kind of in, individual, uh, application of that, of that policy statement, I would suggest, but...
And it says "may" now, it doesn't say "will"?
No, it says "will", sorry.
Oh, I thought you said "may".
I, I said "may", and then I corrected myself. It says "will".
Okay.
"Will reduce its grant".
Okay, well, that's even better. Okay? Go ahead, councillor.
So, your worship, I was, uh, working on my, uh, and Linda's been urging us to do our grants, and it's been a while since I've done them, and there's a lot of money at stake, and so on, so I've been working through it. And, um, today I was able to get, uh, financial statements for one, just one of the applicants, and that particular applicant, uh, I won't name them, has $148,000 in the bank, and has been receiving last year a very substantial donation from the town, and in the preceding years as well. So, the question I have is, where do you go with that? Because I see no need to give that organization any money in, in circumstances where it's got that kind of money. I mean, we, we should not be funding, uh, orga- no. If that organization was showing a deficit, that is, it did, it had a deficit of $27,000, um, four or five years ago, I would understand why I would be giving it a grant. But I don't understand why, in the succeeding three years, when it's showing $47,000 profit, so and so on, accumulating now to $148,000, it should be... Well, I have to think what I'm gonna do. It says I shall, uh, will reduce, at least.
So, so let me ask this, just, just for discussion. Cause I know what you're talking about. Is it, is, is there something that says, uh, not that it says this, but do you ask? Is, are they, are they, um, collecting money or raising money for a project? I don't know. But you're saying this is, what they're asking for is for operating? What'd you say, Jim? Yeah, okay.
To your point, worship, supposing, uh, an organization says they have a project, and they're not looking for any financial money from the town, then obviously we shouldn't be giving them, and, and, you know, we shouldn't think that we're trying to help them with the project by giving them a donation towards the surplus.
You're right.
It would be across purposes.
Keep, keep your light on for a second, cause you're on.
Yeah, and I was just thinking, kind of, on the other hand, um, had an organization in here today that said they made a little money last year, but they had other organizations that helped them out, and they contributed back to that, and then they have enough money for seed money to get it going again...
Yeah.
This year, right? So, but that's quite a difference then.
That's totally different.
That's totally different than having an organization that has in excess of, uh, $140,000 in the bank, right? So...
Coal shed people raise a certain amount of money, and we put a substantial request in. That's another organization where they fund the breakfast program and another program, and at the end of the year, they're out of money, so to speak.
So...
Well, we should think about that before we finish these, uh...
We should. We, we probably should. And maybe, um, maybe in next year's package, maybe we ask the question, if you have a surplus, can you explain that? I don't know, but that doesn't, it doesn't help that statement that, that the C A O just read.
Maybe your worship, uh, the public should know that the total ask for private organizations is $205,000, and we have 70 to give. And so, as we prioritize these things, we ought to think very hard about giving a donation to an outfit that has $100,000 to, compared to another that probably always has to have some help from us to survive. And more to the point, there's another ask here for $406,000, which is basically taxes in lieu. So, folks, a lot of money that they ask us to put out here every year.
So I don't, uh, and this is just me, I always get in trouble. I, I get in trouble, but if you, if, if you're, as an organization, you're asking for taxes in lieu, and then you're asking for another $5,000 grant, I just don't do it. And I'm probably the only one at the table that doesn't do it, but when we give you $100,000 in taxes, that, that doesn't go into the coffers to, you know, for the entire community, that's $100,000. So I just don't do, that's just my practice, right? Everybody looks at it different, and, um, I just, I just can't justify giving money on top of the taxes. And I get in trouble, cause I get the letters after, but I just can't do it. Can't, my, my pen won't write the number down.
So, to that point, I may...
Yes, you may.
I believe that letters that we receive are part of the public record. We have one for the museum, so I'm going to speak to that, and I'm not picking on the museum.
No, 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 no.
But I'm gonna pick them out. So we have a request, uh, from the Armagh County Museum. Each one of the, us councillors received it, and, uh, on our list, they, amongst many others, which provide services, that museum provides services to tri-county area and the whole province, for that matter. But they're asking the town, um, for $97,000, $97,000 forbearance in their taxes, which we can't do by way of giving them free taxes, we have to do it by way of giving a, a grant. Last year, we gave them a grant of $91,662. That's just one of those that add up to the 406,000...
You know what?
Of organizations that are served...
He's gonna say it.
Serving all the residents of this county, for sure. And in my view, when you talk cost sharing, and, uh, shared services, and not amalgamating, what you should be doing is saying, "Okay", to these organizations, you go out and use the cost-sharing formula that we use to fund the airport and the others, uh, which is based on population and assessment, I believe, Jim? Both factors? Well, they're, they're similar formulas, and whereby each municipal unit in the, in the, in the county would prepare, would pay a fair and reasonable share of these kinds of organizations that are being used by the citizens of the whole county. I'll throw that out there for somebody to think about.
I think we're all, we're all thinking of it. So, so in that case, um, and the name of it is Yarmouth County Museum, $100,000 in taxes, that's just us. That's only us. And, uh, only the town residents that, that, um, that pay the bill. And, and we're glad to do that, because they provide a, a service, but, but it's, it's just them, and then on top of it, the extra, it just, uh, yeah, so we need to figure out something on those pieces. So, did you get your questions sort of answered?
I don't know if I can ask the question to make a speech. I, I got my question answered in terms of...
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Jim.
If we are going to make any changes for the next time that we, uh, send out application, or, applications, we should do, have some really good discussions long before that takes place, so that they all know what's going on.
Absolutely.
If there are, if there are gonna be new rules...
Yeah.
And, and I understand, and, you know, I guess I thought some of the same things that, uh, Cliff was saying, and, uh, but it's been tradition over the past number of years, and, and, uh, so I didn't argue with that this year.
And, and so, so to your point, councillor, the, the tradition, when, uh, I think I did, I know, I know Deputy Mayor's gonna say, "What? You did?", but I gave 100% of the taxes this year, I believe I did. But I've never done that.
But we'll have a decision next year.
But, yeah, exactly, but...
Not a $20,000 decision next year.
Yeah, exactly. So, so for the past four years, I've given 90% of the taxes, but I get a letter back from most of them saying, "What have you done?". Because they count, they count on that. So to, to councillor McLeod's point, we have to make sure that, you know, there's a heads up, and, you know, if they see that coming, because the money has to come from somewhere. And, and maybe, councillor Hood, maybe that's something we add to a joint council meeting, that we discuss those things.
I don't want to get anybody too, uh, too, too, uh, upset. I, I got some help from my sister, who's got a, a much warmer heart than I do, and the Deputy Mayor's been very helpful, so I expect I'll be some, doing something quite traditional this year.
Okay. So, I'm gonna look for a motion here, that we...
Do you want a motion that we put that on the next joint council?
No, no, I don't want that yet. Cliff? I'm just, I'm, I'm gonna try a motion here, you don't have to put your light on, I just want you to, that, that we direct staff to get information from our partner municipalities with regard to how they, you know, their grant process and, uh, tax exemption policies, so that we have that information before we take another step. Okay? And just FYI, that was Jeff making me look good again. Thank you. It's a good point. It's a good point. Moved and seconded, any more discussion? Thank you. Question's been called, all those in favor? Aye. Contrary? Motion carried. E E N T position Yarmouth. Do you want to do that? Counselor Hood, can you take this? I have to.
Yeah.
Sorry.
We're talking about the ears, eyes, nose, and throat position.
Yeah, E, E, and a T. Ear, eye, nose, and throat. We've had ear, eyes, nose, and nose and throat specialists in Yarmouth, Dr. Broderick tells me, for I think seven, indeed, eight years. I know that Dr. Finney, we had Dr. Bruce, we had Dr., there were others, George, maybe? And Dr. Broderick's been doing the service here for quite some time, a very busy practice. I've had things taken off of me from that. I won't go into details, but you know what he does.
Can we avoid those details?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, no scars, that's, but seriously, that, that is a specialist service, and I believe that the new provincial health department is, has designs on eliminating that position in the Yarmouth Regional Hospital and making it available only in Kentville, which would mean that's something else that our people would have to travel to Kentville to be serviced for, and it'd be, you know, it's not just the town that's involved, and it's the whole tri-county area. So, I think it would be appropriate, and I so moved, that we address a respectful letter to the Minister of Health to ask him if in fact that is the case, that there is a plan at least in the works, and if he would look into it, review it, and consider, or reconsider the decision with a view to making the position a permanent within our regional hospital system here. So that when Dr. Broderick does retire, and I, he tells me it'll be three to four years when he's finished, we will have that service available to our people. That's a move.
Have a second here? Any other questions? Counselor Cleveland?
Well, in addition to seconding it, um, there, there's more to it. Perhaps we could have a representative from the hospital board come down. I know that it has happened before, but there are other healthcare issues that are around. One of my pet projects about a walk-in clinic, that's the same thing, whether, whether the direction of the new health authority is aligned with ours. I, I would like to address some of that. I'd love to have a representative from the health board be here at some point, and perhaps in addition to that letter, we could make a request that they come up here and speak before council.
And I believe we have a request in, though. We, we've made that motion, so, uh, CAO?
Yes, that, that motion is on the books, and what we were hoping to do is at the next joint council meeting, have representatives from the provincial health authority come and address Counselor Cleveland's concerns expressed previously, as well as these, and I, I know there are others. We need to get an update on, on exactly what the plan is, and be able to, to get straight answers on, on these, these concerns. So, that is the plan for the, for the next joint council meeting, if that's acceptable.
Thank you.
And not to say that we, you know, if the motion passes to send the letter, we'll also send the letter.
I think it's all, it all goes hand in hand.
If we pass this motion, we can probably deal with it at that time, but I still, I still think it's, it's important to go to the Minister of Health on this one. Kentville isn't his writing, I wouldn't want to think that he was blindsided, and it's because he might get accused of moving it up there to enhance his own bailiwick.
That would never happen.
And I'm sure he wouldn't be doing that.
That would never happen.
But we want to make sure that he understands this is in place before he gets blamed for something like that.
Uh, have a mover, seconder, question?
Questions?
Question's been called, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Contrary? Motion passed. Previously distributed motion to go in camera, we have nothing else, I don't think, on here? Motion to go on camera? Second? Thank you.
I had to give in and leave there, I almost took that goddamn tablet, tablet, destroyed it today.